It is four o'clock on October 31, 2019. I'll call the special, not special, the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Ma'am, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Debbie Moore?
Here.
Glenn Johnson?
Here.
All right. Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Matt Lawson?
Present.
Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
Debbie Moore, I already called her.
A quorum is established, and if you would give me a moment, I would, as a point of personal privilege, we learned today that a pillar of our community has suddenly passed away. Ann Beck died very unexpectedly. She had, I've known her since I moved here 15, 16 years ago, and she was a woman of integrity. She was a woman who had strong beliefs, who stood up for her beliefs and said what she felt in a kind and loving way, but she would wear your ear off trying to get her point across, and you don't find many people like that. And she loved this community and loved, only thing she loved more than that is her husband and their families, and I want to extend our condolences to everyone that loved her because she will be greatly missed. So with that, thank you for that. We'll go on to item number two, citizen comments. Do we have any, anyone that wants to speak about anything that's not on the agenda?
Not at this time.
If you, there isn't one here that you haven't turned your sheet in, your request in, please do so now. If not, we'll move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consideration, action, consider action to improve, approve meeting minutes from the September 26, 2019, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've been sent out to the commissioners. Does anyone have anything they wish to add or corrections to be made? If not, I'll hear, entertain a motion to approve as submitted?
Make a motion that we approve as submitted?
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Any, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have two gentlemen who weren't here for that. Item 3B, consider action to appoint a chair for fiscal year 2020, and since that's me, I will turn this meeting over, this section of the meeting, over to Cynthia Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, we will first take nominations for a new chair or to extend the current chair. So do I have nominations from the floor for a chair?
Ms. Meyer, I would nominate Debbie Moore.
I would happily second that nomination as she's been wonderful.
We have a nomination, Debbie, Debbie Moore, who's done a wonderful job, and we've got a second. Any other? So all.
Glen, Glen has a question. No, I call the question.
Call for a vote.
Call for it.
Okay. We're gonna vote for, all in favor for Debbie Moore, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Debbie Moore, congratulations.
Thanks. It's been a privilege serving in any capacity with this commission because I think they're hardworking, knowledgeable, and they come prepared and ask tough questions. Item 3C is consider action to appoint a vice chair for fiscal year 2020. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Pablo Serna for vice chair.
Okay.
I accept.
Are there any others? If no others, I entertain a motion to let nominations be closed.
So, uh.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would second that motion happily.
Motion to close nominations is approved, and Mr. Serna is elected by acclamation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 3D, public hearing and consider action to make a recommendation on an ordinance for a planned development district with a residential base use to allow a residential development of 65.926 acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey abstract 98, located south of Agnes Street and east of State Highway 304, an area currently zoned general retail within the city limits of Bastrop and forward to the November 12, 2019, City Council meeting.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the Grove Plan Development was heard by you on August 27th. It was tabled out the request of the developer to work through several outstanding items. We have met and believe we have a resolution that we can support. The three items were access to State Highway 304 at Colorado Street, offering some additional housing types, and addressing the residential-commercial transition. The address of this particular plan development is south of Agnes and east of State Highway 304. It's a 65.9 acre tract. The property owner is Holt Dunlap. They are, all their representatives are here and present. The land use and zoning, the existing use, it's vacant and undeveloped. The existing zoning is general retail, and the future land use shows this to be transitional residential. The applicant has submitted a zoning request for a planned development with a single-family seven-base zoning. The request includes 337 single-family detached and multifamily lots, and that's different than what you saw in August, with 11 open space lots providing 5.36 acres of open space for proposed development. And the 100-foot LCRAs that runs through this property from east to west, they've done a great job of incorporating that into the development so we're not turning our back on it, and a total of 3.54 acres of the proposed open spaces within the LCRAs easement. This is a location map. You can see if I can figure out how to work this, that this is Highway 71, and this is the border that's 304. You can see the frontage along 304 that's been carved out, owned by a separate owner and is designated for commercial. The current zoning, we've already addressed that, is, I believe it's commercial, and the future land use map shows that it's transition residential, and this is the thoroughfare map that it currently exists. Y'all are aware that the thoroughfare plant, map is being amended as a part of the adoption of the code and will move to a gridded network. This is the concept plan that has been submitted. You might note that there are some alley-loaded lots that we'll be talking about. The blue designates the open space. That's the LCRAs easement that runs through the particular property.
Could I interrupt for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
For the benefit of our two members that weren't here before?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you go over a little bit about what the concept plan is and how it all fits together?
I think I have a slide that does that.
Okay.
But if not, yes, ma'am, I'll come back and do that.
Okay, thank you.
And then this is the park and open space master plan, the pink is the LCRAs, and the green is the designated open space. There are going to be two points of connectivity, right in, right out at Colorado, and then the extension of Hunter's Point, which is the southern extension that shows up on the thoroughfare master plan. There are three street types, the collector, which is going to be Colorado and Hunter's Point, I think, to the south, residential streets, and then the alleyways are gonna be behind the 30-foot, 35-foot product that's alley-loaded that we'll talk about here. So here is the overview and the variety. When y'all saw it before, it just had two lot types, and so essentially, they've come back and, as the developer expressed during the planning-zoning meeting in August, it is a challenging lot. There's not just a whole lot that they can do with it, but I appreciate them going back and attempting to accommodate the transitional residential and putting some variety in that. So they're going to, they're proposing 35, 48, 35-foot lots, and so just by virtue of the lot size, by the time you have the lot, you have the setbacks, you're going to have a small product if you build one story. Two-story is gonna add some variety, so we get the variety, we get a smaller product. So what they have included to address our variety of house sizes is provide dwelling unit ranges. So if you look at them, you're gonna have the same epiphany I did. Oh, well, Linda, that's not much variety. They both started at 1,000 and they top out at 2,500, 3,500 square feet. What I can tell you with a 35, 40, and 50-foot lot, you're gonna be hard-pressed to put a 3,300-square-foot house on it that's not vertical. The lot's just not going to allow it. My husband and I attempted to build a big house, one-story lot, and you just can't make it happen. So the virtue of the lot size is going to help control the dwelling. What you will get, what the developer is going to show you, is these lot sizes will ensure a variety of product. And so they have some concept plans they wanna walk through you, through with you, and you'll see that as you drive through the subdivision, it won't look like your standard ABC house right next to each other by virtue of the lot size. There are 254 40-foot lots proposed, represents about 75% of the total lots. There are 17 50-foot lots, and then there are 18 multifamily lots that have been added. 15% of the lots will have a minimum lot depth of 95, and that happens with 35, 40, and 50-foot lots. Walkability is encouraged. The residential and commercial transition question that was posed to y'all on August 27th, that's a difficult problem to resolve because the commercial property that fronts 304 is owned by a different landowner. So the engineer representing that owner met with Holt, and we sat down, and they have, I think, the best solution we can, and essentially what they're going to put in the plan development that's before your review is if residential fences get built and the commercial fence goes up, they can come down, and we'll work with the commercial developer to not build a concrete block fence, but something that is appropriate. We'll landscape the backside of the building so that we don't back up to the traditional commercial because we really do want the neighbors to walk to the doctor's offices that are there, walk to the businesses that are there, and not feel like they've got to get in a car to safely access those properties, which was really the goal of the conversation. Madam Chair, I'm not sure that I answered your concept question to help Commissioner Johnson and Harris, and if I did not, please let me know.
What, do you guys have any questions? And there's no question that you should hesitate to ask.
I have a question, and it may not be-
Turn your mic on, please.
I have a question, and it may not be relevant to this, and it can be answered later, but as I, as I read the B3 code, this is, this is a planned development district, right?
Yes, sir.
And so it, by definition, it goes under the prior ordinances.
That is correct.
And this complies with the prior ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Now, the modifications, how does it compare to what would happen under the new B3? And that probably is irrelevant to this question. I'm just curious, though, about how, the other question I had was, how many more in the pipeline like this that started, that are planned development district, that are in the process after, before the B3 code was adopted?
This is the only zoning. Isn't that correct? Correct.
Okay.
The answer to your question, and it is purely an intellectual exchange between the two of us because there is no relevance to it.
Right.
If it was under the B3 codes, we would be way interested in streetscape, there'd be more sidewalks, we'd have more conversations about walkability, integration of parks, but to these gentlemen's credit, we have pushed that. This is about the seventh or eighth version of this, so they have really worked to embrace the principles of the B3 code when they didn't have to. The things that we got with this that I think are important, we didn't turn our back on the LCRAs park. We all appreciate the statistics prove that parkland increases the value of your home 20% plus. The mayor and I were in, let's see, Kentucky, speaking at the CNU conference, and we toured a facility that had open space just exactly like this product, and the first thing the developer said is, we're getting a 30% premium on these lots. Everybody wants to front that parkland. So by embracing it and front-loading these streets, we believe that there's real value. It will be seen as pedestrian-friendly. So the way the neighborhoods are built, we don't have the traditional, we call them loops and lollipops with your cul-de-sacs. They're gridded streets, there's connection points across the easements so that one section of this is not isolated from another. So again, they worked to embrace the real elements of B3 that were important, that's connectivity and open space. So if we had a clean slate, it would look similar to this. We'd be able to push a little harder for some of the amenities, but I think considering where we started and where we are, they've done a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. The developer, Madam Chair, is here, and they have a presentation they'd like to walk through, and you might consider that before you hold the public hearing.
Absolutely. Please introduce yourself and tell us how you fit into the project, please.
I'm Seth Merrick with BGE. I'm the engineer for Waymaker on this project, and I'm going to let Peter Verdicchio with SEC Planning address some of the planning elements. There were three questions on, the last time we met, that we've addressed that I wanted to go over very quickly. A couple of additional things beyond what was mentioned by Linda. On the interaction between commercial and residential, one other thing we did was add a little bit of additional backyard buffer, so we moved the building setback line on the single-family lots to provide more green space between the structures of both the commercial and the residential properties. The access to 304 has been established as a right-in, right-out, as opposed to a full access, which would have been allowed by the TIA. And then the product mix, the multifamily element is probably more of a missing-middle type of housing, a attached product townhouse, so we've laid that out. It's on the cul-de-sac, which I don't know if we even fully discussed the cul-de-sac on the southwest end last time, but that allows future connectivity to the tract to the south. So we had worked, I think, in pretty significant detail with staff to answer all three of those questions that were kind of the remaining items from the last time we met, so I wanted to kind of go over those quickly and make sure that there weren't any additional questions on those items before we move on to the planning presentation.
Anyone have any questions?
I did have a question on the, can you talk about how the alleys are connected to the streets?
Sorry, let me get back to a plan right here. The alleys are connected to the streets. How do I, how did you do that zoom? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Those are the alley connections to the streets. So this is more of a paso, completely unloaded, there's no driveways on this street. It fronts the park on the south side, it fronts the alley-loaded product on the north side, and then your alley would tie back into your local street right there. So that's the interaction between those, where as you're going down those nice kind of boulevard-looking streets, you have park on one side, and then you're looking at the actual front of a home as opposed to a garage, so that the garage would be on the rear of that home.
So it's a paved alley in the rear?
It's a paved alley, correct.
That's my question.
Other questions that I can address?
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, I'll let Peter run through these slides.
Excellent. Good afternoon. My name is Peter Verdicchio with SEC Planning. Must admit, we were brought in kind of late in the process here, and that's one of the reasons why I asked Seth to come up to answer the questions from the previous meeting, so I'll admit I'm a new face here for many of you. We were really brought into the project and process as land planners, and more importantly, landscape architects, to sit down and start using some of our modeling software to give a sense, a visual sense of that third dimension. Some of the questions you were just asking about, what does this product look like looking over a street, and that sort of thing. So we've prepared a set of about five or six slides here. I just wanted to walk through quickly with y'all and hopefully help give a little bit of that visual for that third dimension on the project. So the first of the slides, you've already seen the plat drawing, if you will, but it's a black and white, so, you know, nothing like putting a little color to it, and this color graphically shows the various lot sizes, product that Linda was speaking to, as well as the alley product. So again, you know, as we start looking, you can see the green for the park space underneath the easement, as well as some additional over on the east side, and we've grayed in the alley, and so you can see the transition from the 35s to the 40s and how the alley works with the public streets and that transition between the products. Another thing that we wanted to do is start showing what I call the livability to the project, and so when you look at this slide, you'll see some of those elements, like the fact that we've started considering and contemplating and discussing what the entry features would look like, was that arrival experience. Very important to a project like this, you know, we've spent time focusing on the LCRAs versus turning our back, and I'll admit, I'm guilty of that. I mean, I've worked on projects in Bastrop before, and we put the sear fence along the back, and you just hope nobody notices these big poles. These guys have actually embraced it and taken, if you look at the bottom-left corner, it's a photo, I think it's up in Dallas, and kind of taken that Dallas Metroplex approach and said, these are great open space corridors, let's embrace it, let's put trails, let's give opportunities for kids to go out there and throw a ball and use the space instead of being in no-man's-land, forgotten about in backyards. Now we're starting some of the fun stuff. This is, like I said, the first about five or six slides that show three-dimensional modeling of what the streets would look like in the parks. So this first slide is looking across the LCRAs easement park, across, the product that you see across the street is that alley product. So again, you can see we have no garages, no driveways. It creates a nice, clean porch living, front yard living out onto that space, people can walk up and down the street without the conflicts of cars and driveways and that sort of thing. This slide is taken from one of those cross-streets that Linda was speaking to, looking down the length of the easement, and so it really kind of gives you a sense of the scale, the grandiose scale of this, and what can happen in there with the community trail. You know, I'd say, too, is because of the easement down here at the end in the open space corridor, there will be a great opportunity to create that pedestrian connectivity between the residential and the commercial office in the future as the two develop together because obviously it would be developing under different cycles, but there's a great opportunity there. Quick slide for you of the, it's called multifamily in the plans here, but multifamily town home type of product, again, creates a neat opportunity for another housing product, another demographic offering in town, so pretty excited about that as well. And then I'm gonna finish up with two slides here, probably one of the more critical things, and that is the transition between the residential and the non-residential. And everybody has touched already on the various things with setbacks, landscaping, fencing, but I just want to take a second to graphically show you what it would look like from the back of an office building, you know, medical office, professional office building, commercial, across the setback buffer zone from that lot towards the wall elements that we've already spoke to, and then lastly, the residential and the increased enhanced setbacks for the residential as well. So it kind of gives you a sense of the scale there from the streetscape perspective, but then last, this is what it looks like from the air. So it kind, it gives you a clear sense of, you know, I want to say it's about 50, 60-foot of space separation from as close as a commercial building could get to the shared property line as well as residential houses, and as close as they could get to that shared property line as well. And again, I don't want to speculate on somebody else's land and use when you start looking at what's happening with the hospital, with the medical office that'll be there. We're confident that the scale of what happens on that side would be something similar to what you're seeing on the screen, which would be consistent with the scale and feel of the residential across the shared property line. And that kind of brings us to a closure for, from that perspective, what I like to call the fun stuff, the visual, and if you have any questions, I'm here, as well as the rest of the team, to answer them for you.
If Pablo's happy, you've done a good job.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
So what's the nature of the transition, that shared property line between, because I know we talked about, you know, developer building a concrete wall when they do the commercial versus, are we just proposing a wood fence there now, or what's kind of the, what was that transition look like?
I don't know that we can, we can at this point in time tell you because not all parties are prepared to participate in the conversation, but when we sit down with the commercial developer, and I've gotten an email from the engineer Brendan, who said he's coming to town in the next two weeks and wants to meet, we'll sit down, and this will be one of the things that will be on my list to talk to him about, to encourage walkability. What we don't want is your traditional commercial development where we have buildings surrounded by asphalt, we've got your typical concrete block, and we're gonna back up to that. So we're gonna work very hard to see if they will look at something that is appropriate for a transition. I don't know if it's wrought iron fence. If it's a medical building and it's not a commercial application, there's no reason to wall it off. It creates its own set of challenges when it's walled off. It says, you stay over here and I stay over here. So if we can figure out a way to use brick columns and wrought iron, depending on what they're looking at, that could be an option. I'll work real hard to make sure it's not wood fences because that's a code enforcement nightmare waiting to happen, and I think it detracts from what we're trying to ultimately do. One of the interesting things, if we were in our new zoning code, we don't use uses, and we wouldn't be so definitive in separating them with brick walls. So depending on what the ultimate uses are, if we can fix it where we don't have a brick wall, we'll work to not do that. But if your question is, is it gonna be wooden fences, I'm gonna work real hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
I guess, because I was under the impression that the old code would kind of require a brick wall standing there.
Yes.
And I get the idea that having grass there instead of asphalt is much improved upon what could have been there. I guess I then look at that from the homeowner's standpoint, that I like the idea of a wrought iron fence, but if you've got public space and you're owning a home, and you've got people looking to the backyard where your kids are playing, you know, I would almost rather that just be a brick wall rather than with the grass there just to create the privacy in a non, I guess, you know, not like the wood fence, but, you know, I guess that's just the concern, because I agree with the idea that having a brick wall and having a great transition between these two spaces would be fantastic, turning the houses around, facing that area, maybe having a street between them that kind of creates that buffer between the private rather than a fence line, but I guess this is the concern. I mean, I get the idea, I think the wrought iron fence looks a whole lot more attractive. I like the green space, but you get families with backyards and kids playing there, just kind of seems like a bit of a challenge as well.
So I think that the way I would address that is what you choose to do on your property is your business, and if you want to put a wood fence up that you can maintain to protect your children, I think that's great. I just think that when you have a commercial piece of property that ultimately ends up being owned by somebody that doesn't live here, that's maintained by a property manager, it's just asking for long-term problems from code enforcement. So I think your concern can be addressed by the residential property owner, and I think our goal would be, on the commercial side, to find something that maintains well but doesn't create an artificial barrier.
Yeah, and I guess this, to that point, the only concern I have is, and again, you can build a fence inside the other fence, you know, if you want to, but we all have to look at that from the outside, and it kind of defeats to a certain point this nice green grass that was planted behind the facility and maintained and-
What would be your pleasure? What would you like to see?
Well, I would like to see the houses turned around, more of a, you know, kind of a brownstone-type house facing the commercial, but I get that we're not necessarily there, but, you know, where the public, where the private property of the homeowner is tucked back in an area that's away from the public view, if there is any such. But yeah, I mean, I understand the challenge of what's going on. I feel like that's kind of where the B3 codes would go with it, you know, to embrace this commercial rather than turn your back on the commercial.
Yes.
And so that's where I'm have, just having that little struggle of that transition, and I feel like the B3 codes have attempted to solve that, not that they're our codes right now, but the, yeah, I just, I mean-
And I will tell you, that has been the struggle for staff, and we're still, we're dealing with it. There are two artificial elements that we've been dealing with, and that's House Bill 3167 that y'all were briefed on, that council addressed, and our process has changed September 1st. Well, any application that was submitted prior to that gets its own set of issues. that's House Bill 3167 that y'all were briefed on, that council addressed, and our process has changed September 1st. Well, any application that was submitted prior to that gets its own set of issues. And then this code, we're almost there, but not quite. So everything that's in this transition, we've worked the best we can to get it to that. But we're limited with the authority that we have.
Absolutely.
So it's hard on the applicant, and it's hard on staff. And so I'm going to be glad when it's finally adopted and everything that comes through the door has a set of rules to work through. When we sat down with the engineer, I got a sense that they want to do the right thing. I'm encouraged that the owner developers coming to town, and these are going to be conversations. So we'll continue to pitch that. But at the end of the day, I think because they're under the old zoning ordinance, we're limited really at what we can mandate, and just hope that graciously they get the vision of the community and want to do different.
I have a follow-up to that. Can you go back to that slide that shows a little bit of an overview between the commercial, that one?
That one?
Yeah. So on this layout, and I know this was done before the B3, but our B3 is really pushing commercial to the street. And we're putting the parking in the rear so that it's more of a walkable on the, on 304 connection. And that, I think that's going to help out with what you're trying to do back there, because you could easily have another green belt right behind that. And the parking still, I'm guessing the buffer is still like twenty-five feet or something like that, whatever that is. But I know that we're trying to push those buildings. Instead of setting them that close to the back of those lots, we want to, we really want to put the building closer to the main road, if I'm correct.
That is correct. And depending on what the commercial piece ultimate build-out is, and what they look like, you know, the great thing about the new codes is, is that we have a whole different perspective about parking. And to this point, everything that we've done relative to retail development's been defined by how we chose to plan parking. And because we don't have mandates about parking, it really frees things up. What's going to drive B3 is drainage and impervious cover. And the way you manage that's with limited parking. So it really allows us to sit down and get creative with the developers that says, if you'll come to town with a whole different perspective, we can save you money in places where you can spend money where it matters. And it matters long-term for walkability and property values. So I'm hoping that's the conversation we get to have.
Yeah, I think it's got opportunity there.
Yes.
I think under the codes under which this was developed, I think we've reached a pretty good solution and resolution. And appreciate the work you've put in to address our concerns.
Yes, ma'am. And with that, staff recommends approval, and I will be available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak, either for or against this item? If there is none, I will declare the public hearing held and closed, and it will entertain a motion from the commission.
Your motion to approve per staff?
Motion to approve. Mr. Serrano, is there a second?
Second.
Multiple. Mr. Harris seconded his first motion. So would you please call the roll?
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you. Moving on to item number four, updates. Update 4A, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items, and go over the PMZ meeting schedule for 2020.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I have two things I want to talk about that are not on this. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Lassen. Last night at the Texas Downtown Conference, the Spring Dental Building was the winner in the new construction category. And that's quite, quite a to-do. So we want to say congratulations, Dr. Lassen. Wonderful addition to our community. Bastrop County really did well. The City of Bastrop won the best event for our pop-up. Dr. Lassen won for new construction. The City of Smithville won for the best partnership. And the City of Elgin took home the two mothership awards of the volunteer of the year, and then the Main Street Coordinator of the Year. So Bastrop County was well represented. And in a state this size, that's saying something. So we're all doing great things. Second thing I want to let you know is, I am currently the interim planning director, and the good news is, there's a terminus date to that. I have hired a planning and development director who will start on the 21st. His name is Jared Mayfield. He is an AIC, AI, AICP, and a CNUN, or U. He's got all the designations.
Whatever those letters mean, he's got them all, right?
He's got them all. That's right. The AICP, everybody has. But when you get the CN, the Congress of National Urbanisms, A, that means you get what we do. And you've had to work hard to do that. Jared brings to us twenty-plus years in government specific to planning. He's been about twenty years in Victoria. He's currently the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Murphy. There's an awful lot of things about Jared that really, that struck me, that he was a good fit. The first is, he loves to restore historic homes. And he's restored about eight of them. So he automatically gets the most important thing about us, and that's the authentic Bastrop. And so I talked to him about renovating old homes. And I said, so let's talk about what that looks like with the international codes, because that's a challenge, isn't it? And he loudly rolled his eyes, and he said, you bet it is. He said, I figured out how to do it in the residential piece. I still struggle with it on the commercial piece. So he already gets the inherent struggle we have to protect our authentic past, but yet be a part of progressive future. He has worked with their CDBG products. He worked, the first year he got there, with their CDBG program.
Hang on, that's a community development block grant.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I know better. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. And from that, was able to work with Habitat for Humanities and build eleven homes, and was able to get their chapter of Habitat for Humanities to have a full-time director. He has served on their board. He gets affordable housing. He gets workforce housing. He has managed their grants. They have a lot of federal grants, and we rely heavily on doing that. He has managed and cleaned up building inspection, the planning processes. So he feels the pains and the growing pains that we're going through. They have the same automated permitting process that doesn't work, that we don't have. And it was like I was listening to me. So he appreciates what that's going to look like as we migrate to something that works. He is currently the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Murphy, and he is waiting to start, to land, and bring a really big deal to Murphy. So all of that to tell you, from start to finish, he gets the entire process of what it takes to work together. He understands the importance of teamwork. One of the interesting things about Victoria is they don't have zoning, but they do have a subdivision ordinance. And so they built a comprehensive plan that was very strong with public input, won awards. He's very proud of that. So he's used to working in an environment where you have to be flexible. You have to understand what the end result is, and figure out how to make that work. That's important to me, because it's very difficult to take somebody that has earned their stripes under Euclidean zoning and give them the B3 code and say, now go conquer and be successful. So I think he is perfect for us at this time. He is extremely organized and absolutely does not want to be bored, follows up, follows through. I've known his city manager, his former city manager, she's since retired, says great things about him. And she said, the big challenge is, is keeping him from being bored. I said, that won't be a problem around here. So he'll start on the 21st. So we're very, very excited to have him coming on board. And then the next thing is the planning and zoning calendar. Just wanted to let you know that this is the 2020 Planning and Zoning Calendar that has all of the dates through the end of 2020. By ordinance, we have amended your November meeting, because it falls on Thanksgiving. And the way the ordinance now reads is, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be the Thursday before Thanksgiving in November. And in December, it will be the Thursday before Christmas. And in future years, if Halloween falls on a Thursday, you won't be meeting on that date either. I now know to add that to the holiday schedule. So just wanted to bring your attention to the published schedule. The reason this becomes so important is the thirty-day shot clock that's associated with House Bill 3167. When we take in plans that require your approval, we need to be able to get them to you and have a quorum to make that happen. Yes, sir?
Question on that. Just as far as from a staff organization, so usually, I mean, we got the shot clock on a plat that comes before us. I've yet to see a plat that when we ask the question, is this administratively complete, the answer hasn't been yes. At what point is that determination made in the process from when it's submitted to be administratively complete? Because as far as I understand state law, once it's administrative complete, we really can't say no anyway.
So we are going through a wholesale extraordinarily painful process right now. And so when 3167 went in, we reorganized all of the internal processes. And so on Mondays, we now take submittals. We take building plans every Monday. Depending on when y'all meet, depends on when we take zoning requests, when we take plats. And then other weeks, we take public improvement plans and the other things. So on Monday, they come in, and we have now built a checklist for every process that now answers that question of what is administratively complete. This last week, so we've now enforced it. So we're not getting much through the process. Everything's failing. So we had three plats to come in on Monday, and they failed, because they failed our administratively completeness check, which we should have never been accepting. So now we're sending them back because they're not. So what will come to you now will be administratively complete. It will be reviewed and voted on by DRC. And what will be in your package?
Explain DRC for those that weren't here.
DRC is Development Review Committee. Thank you, ma'am. So there is a Development Review Committee that's been established by council. There are members of that committee. The Director of Planning chairs the committee. The Director of Public Works is Vice Chair. The City Manager's Office has a representative, the Director of Electric, the Fire Chief, and... Engineering. Engineering, the city engineer. And then there are ex officio members. And so we will review the plat, and we will recommend approval, approval with conditions, disapproval, and that will be it. So it will come to you now, because it's administratively complete, and it will come forward with recommendations on actions so that we meet the state law. What will happen is, is our recommendations will state the law, that if we are recommending anything other than approval, the burden of proof according to the rules are the city's. So we will state the law that they have failed to meet, that will be the basis for your denial.
And I guess it probably doesn't matter for this, but what is that scenario? You know, that it's administratively complete, but yet staff would say it's illegal or it shouldn't be allowed?
So administratively complete, we have a series of items that says, the cover sheet has the appropriate information, so we can review the plat. That we've got the appropriate copies, that the electronic copy actually meets the manual piece of paper that you put forward. That the drainage plan has been approved by the city engineer, and it's attached. So it will be those kinds of things that will allow us to say, we have the information that we need. The most obvious things have been met. And then we have about a four-page checklist on plats that Public Works has their items, the Fire Department has their items, and they go through and get in the notes and the nitty-gritty. And the premise is, is if our applicants would just read, would just follow along and check the boxes, there would really be no reason for them to ever be denied. But we're struggling with getting people to read. But part of that is, is that we validated bad behavior with our silence, because we've taken it when they haven't read it, and done something with it anyway. And we have gotten in this vicious cycle of we're taking things four, five, and six times, and it's designed by review. And rather than the engineers and the architects owning that, they're blaming us, and the ultimate customer thinks we're the problem. So we've got to stop that. So what we're going to do is, we're going to review it once, we will approve with comments. And if your comments come back and they're not right, we're going to disapprove, charge you again, and see you again. So we're only going to do it once with comments. And I think the cycle of all of that will ultimately hopefully stop. We're working hard, but it's painful.
It's amazing what happens when you put the burden back on the people that want you to do something. You're bad people by making them do their jobs sometimes.
Yes, ma'am. And part of that is, we've got to do our job. You know, we have not necessarily developed good habits ourselves. And so they will tell you, I sit in there, I've blocked my calendar, and we spend all day. It's painful, did I mention painful? But I question things, you know, let's go back and get the ordinance. Oh, oh, the ordinance doesn't say what you think it says. Oh, let's start there. So we're learning the right steps. And we're learning how to do plan review appropriately, so we can quit being the problem. And it will be the responsibility of the development community to follow along, because we've set them up for success. And we're not validating bad behavior with our silence or enabling bad behavior. And we've been as much of the problem as anybody. But we're going to fix that.
I appreciate the hard work that the planning department's put in.
They are doing a great job.
Yeah. It's frustrating for everyone at times, but I know you're working hard. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on that?
Do you have enough staff to handle that?
Well, so the challenge that we have is, and I'm preaching to the choir, because y'all already know this, but you're going to be glad we finally have figured this out. Part of it is, is that we see silos. Y'all don't. Y'all just see the city. And so part of the things that we're working on on Wednesday is figuring out, we're all playing for the same team. We've got the same uniform on, same name, and that all of us have to do our part. And so by doing group plan review, Public Works is understanding their connectivity to fire. And fire's understanding that every time they make a choice with the fire code, they're impacting the water system. So now that's not happening in a vacuum, we're having to talk about it. And we're having to debate life safety and what makes the best sense. And so in doing that, we're helping the building official, for instance, figure out what his teammates need. So now when he reviews a set of plans, he's reviewing for his teammates. And we're not figuring those things out in the field after we've issued a building permit, and it's too late. Now we're the problem. So the answer to your question is, I think I've got enough staff when everybody's doing their job and pulling for their teammates, because we've done a lot of working against each other instead of with each other. I have managed the excess capacity question, because we have hired Tony DiBono with MWM Designs as our city engineer. And we've done that, because Tony brings excess capacity. So if we were to get slammed with plan review, and we don't have enough capacity, Tony's firm can do that for us. So we're going to learn to be efficient. We know what to check. We're focused on the right things. And hopefully, our time to do good quality plan review is reduced. So when we get slammed, we're efficient at it. But if not, we have built-in capacity with Tony. I've been extraordinarily impressed with Tony. He gets it. He reviews plans. He's very efficient. It doesn't take him long to figure out it works. And if it doesn't work, he knows why it doesn't work. We're also going above and beyond now. We're reaching out to our customer. Instead of assuming that they're going to get back to us, or assuming that they know what they're doing, we're calling and asking. We haven't seen you in a while. Do we have something that you're waiting on from us that we're not aware of? Or where are you in the process? So we are adding to our job description advocating for our customer. So we have created a purpose statement for plan review. And there are really three elements to it. One is life safety. That's where we start and end. With you as the public going in and out of a building, we have a fiduciary responsibility for you to know that you're safe. The second thing of that is, is we have a protection, we have an obligation to protect our infrastructure. When public infrastructure is going in, it needs to be built right and built well. We all know the developer bills at once, but as taxpayers, we pay for it in perpetuity. And then the third thing of that is, is that we need to make sure that the asset that's being constructed will meet or exceed its useful life. And so that's really our purpose statement. And now we're beginning to backfill with values of how do we do that? Well, part of that is, is we provide really good customer service. And that means we can't assume the engineer's talking to the owner. We can't assume that things are going right and going well. So we're picking up the phone, I'm offering an awful lot of apologies. Boy, I've offered more apologies the past two weeks than I probably have since God here. But if we own it, I'm real sorry... So we're trying to learn from our mistakes, because we're not perfect, no city is. But that's how we're working toward all of that.
Just want to comment, and honestly, a question, just as far as being proactive and going out and helping people find out where they are, I think it's fantastic, I think especially with our citizens that kind of get lumped up in this development category, which they won't consider themselves part of, and especially since a certain amount of downtown Bastrop will have to be redeveloped, replatted, a bunch of different things, you know, they're gonna be lost in the process, and they feel that they're kind of doing something wrong. A lot of times, by the way, they're kind of just spit out through the process. And so I think going out and reaching out to them, and helping them through the process, and making sure they have what they need, or directions that they need, will go infinitely far and...
Well, I appreciate that, but I, I want to elaborate on that a little bit, because we've, we've had some internal conversations about, you know, one of the benefits of, of living in a small town, and protecting our authentic self, is recognizing that our citizens aren't developers. And so we really have two bases of, of customers. And so I'll use an example, there is a house being renovated on MLK. And so we could have taken the approach that you've got to come in and engineer and stamp every aspect of that. But the truth of the matter is, there was only one piece of that whole construction project that needed to be engineered and stamped, and it was the foundation. He wanted to raise it up out of the, the floodplain by two feet, so he did. So now, he's brought in a sketch that folks that know how to renovate houses can draw all day long. And so I've challenged staff to say, why are we going to spend important money on a set of engineered plans, when he could spend that money on renovating that house? And so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take a proactive approach, and we're gonna actually go out and meet with the contractor, and if we feel like they know what they're doing, then that will help us help them. And so we're gonna make sure that they know they gotta buy new windows to meet the energy code. We're gonna make sure that they know studs have to be 16 inches apart, and we're gonna make sure that they know basic wiring, and when we need to come and inspect, and when we don't, when you have a bedroom, you have to have a window that opens, so you can crawl in and out of it, and it needs a smoke detector. Okay, I don't need an engineer stamp to know that. So to your point, Dr. Lassen, we're working real hard for the people that know how, that want to do, that we, we pick and choose our battles, and we pick and choose our battles around life safety and the things that matter, and we be good customers, so that people that can, that can save the money, will renovate, that otherwise wouldn't, because we're too complicated and too difficult to do business with, we can give that extra level of customer service. But if you're building Seaton, you better have a stamp set of engineered plans, and we're gonna read that code front, winter, and backwards, because that's what's required. So we're working real hard to find a way to manage the two different customers that, because what's ultimately happened is, is that they just don't come and get a permit, and we know that. They're not talking to us, and we know that. We gotta fix that, and we're part of that problem.
And I commend you for that, and your leadership with our staff.
Well, thank you.
Just one question on, if they submit a plan that's rejected, it's rejected for reasons, right?
Yes, sir, and we tell them.
And, and do they have one, one chance to come back, or they then start all over?
So let me, let me explain the entire process to you. Before people get in the process, they have an opportunity to come and meet with staff, we call it a pre-development meeting. But as we're going through this process, we're figuring out that we need something a little before pre-development, because pre-development right now requires you to, to essentially bring a concept drainage plan, it requires you to put together a concept scheme, and really know what you're doing. You gotta spend money to get there. Well, we need what we're gonna call a concept meeting, where you just need to sit down and drain. And we had a customer come in, I guess, a week ago Thursday, has a piece of property in town, and it's complicated. There's a reason that the property hadn't developed. So we, we met with the customer on Thursday, and I caused staff to convene on that property at nine o'clock Monday morning. And we walked, we talked about water, we talked about sewer, we talked about electric, we talked about fire service, we talked about long-term build-out, and what that might look like, and some of the challenges with drainage, some of the issues with building and how they wanted to do it. So we went back with a long list of things you need to consider. So if I got that, I'd stop and go, hmm, this is gonna cost way more money than I ever thought possible. This might not be where I want to build my drain. Well, isn't it wonderful that we tell you that before you spend money? So the, the answer is, is that we need to add that, but the thought is, is that they've come through a pre-development meeting with staff, where we have identified and provided the checklist, we've explained the process, we've hit on the life safety things that matter, we've explained when you need to have that, that design professional and why. And our checklist are really designed, Commissioner, if they would follow the directions, there isn't a reason they can't get through the process the first time. So we will review it, we will help you remember that you need to read, and if you choose not to, then you get to start over and pay the process, because we've built the fees around, we'll review it, and we'll, we'll, we'll review your comments. But if we have to do that a second time, you're costing the taxpayers money, and you just need to pay the fee again.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I've got a building that probably needs some renovations, so I'm very interested.
Well, come for a concept meeting, sir.
I will do that, yes. And I just, the agents I practiced before, they have a, you know, two strikes, you're out, and then you start all over again.
Yes, sir.
To say, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Last question, do you have like a quick, are we gonna have a quick turnaround, or identify like tenant finish outs, and that's, imagine it's a separate process?
So everything is designed to be quick. Every one of these processes, because we have 30 days to get in and out, I absolutely built the calendar myself. I can get anything and out, anything in and out of this building in 23 days or less. But the way the process is built, they did, comes in on Monday, it's reviewed, if it meets our completeness checks, it's in the drop box Tuesday night. We don't take appointments on Wednesday. Everybody that's involved in the development review meeting on Wednesday, that's all we do. We sit down and we go through the plans, if we can't get through them, we have one more Wednesday, and then the, the next DRC meeting, we're responding and getting comments. So our goal is to get you in and out of the door in 14 days. Let Austin beat that man, or sir. So if you'll follow the directions, we're gonna be the best game in town. If you don't follow the directions, we're gonna frustrate you to no end. And my goal is, is by January, we're gonna be to that point. But we're doing a lot of give and take, we're sitting down and negotiating, we're, we're working to not be the problem, as I said, but, but we are the problem. So I'll apologize as long as we need to, but we're gonna get to a point that if you'll just follow the rules, we can get you in and out quick.
Anything else? Move on to 4B, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners, that particular items to be listed on future agenda, agendas, but no group conversations are allowed. Does anybody have anything that they would like to see on the next agenda, or in the upcoming months? I would like to, possibly after the first of the year, get back on our review of the comprehensive plan. We kind of got sidetracked on that with B3s. And it doesn't have to be a whole meeting dedicated to it, we can take some chapters at a time. Anything else? Item five. Make a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Let's go. Second.
Happy Halloween, everybody, we're adjourned.